It's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would recognize Selectman Norrell to lead us.
Unlocking doors.
Selectman Musco, would you do the honors, please?
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the people, to the nation, under God, indivisible, and with justice for all.
Far away.
Good job, Charlie. Charlie, you just signed the pledge.
We're good.
I am very sorry. I honestly could not see that he left. So, as far as attendance goes, three members of the Selectmen are physically present. Two members are attending virtually, both under COVID protocols. So we're all present and accounted for. I'm gonna ask for a motion to recess the Selectmen's meeting and convene the public hearing, starting at seven o'clock PM. Can I have a motion to recess and convene?
Selectman Musco will recess the Board of Selectmen meeting for the public hearing at 7:01 PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we're gonna convene the public hearing. This pertains to Agenda Item 8F. And you'll recall at our last Selectmen's meeting, there was a request from the Connecticut Trolley Museum that the town partner with them to participate in what's called the Neighborhood Assistance Act. And we all agreed to move forward with that. I submitted the necessary paperwork to accommodate that, and one of the things that they came back with was that they needed a public hearing notice and minutes. I said, well, we didn't have a public hearing for that. We just did it at a Selectmen's meeting. Will the agenda and the minutes for that suffice? And they said that the statute actually requires you to have a public hearing on the notion of entering into that agreement. So, in order to keep things moving along here, we're gonna now hold a public hearing on the question of whether or not the Neighborhood Assistance Act, that the town should engage with the Trolley Museum to participate in the Neighborhood Assistance Act. And then there will be minutes generated, and then there will be, there was a public notice that was already filed. So we'll be able to take care of all of the statutory requirements and move that forward. So with that, I'm gonna ask the deputy First Selectman to chair the public hearing, because I can't see who's there. So Marie, I'm gonna pass the chair to you, if that's okay.
Marie DeSousa, Chair of the Meeting, President in the Room. We have Mr. Anderson, Melissa Maltesi. We have Bill Los. We have the Chief Tomah Perry. And then we have two representatives from the Beta Group that are not from town. Neither is Melissa. So, at this point, the notice of the public hearing for the Town of East Windsor Board of Selectmen. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute 12-632A, the Board of Selectmen shall hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 19, 2022, at 7:00 PM in person at Town Hall. John Daly, Jr., Meeting Room 11, Riley Street, Broadbrook, and via Zoom. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive comment from the public regarding approval of the NAA-012020 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Program proposed on behalf of the Connecticut Trolley Museum. And the public notice was dated in general firework on May 11, 2022, and I have it if anybody cares to see it. Would anyone in the public like to speak? Mr. Anderson?
Paul Anderson, 89 Main Street, Broadbrook. I totally agree with this. I think the town should help support the Trolley Museum and move forward with the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? Anyone else like to comment? With that, no other comments, I would ask that we conclude the public hearing for this matter.
I move to adjourn the public hearing at 7:04 PM. You have to call a vote.
Call for a vote.
Everybody agree?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I would move that we, I'm sorry, I did.
I was, I was gonna, so we've adjourned the public hearing, and so I'm just gonna call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen back to order. I'll take the chair, if you don't mind. And, this is your chance. So Peg, one of the things that we just need to make sure is that there are separate and standalone minutes for that public hearing. If you could take care of that, that would be appreciated.
No problem.
Thank you. And as soon as we get those, then I'll forward that along to DRS, and we'll be street legal in terms of the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. Okay, so we're on to approval of minutes. They were in the packet. Have, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes presented or prepared by Peg?
Selectman Musco will move to approve the regular meeting minutes for May 5, 2022.
Selectman Norrell, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any corrections or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are adopted. I don't have any communications. I don't have any resignations. We do have some reappointments. We could do
Power of Participation?
Did I miss that? I'm sorry, I did miss that. So Marie, once again, I'm gonna ask you to call it off if there's anybody who's there, because I can't see more than about a third of the room.
Anyone? Paul Anderson?
Yep. Paul Anderson, 89 Main Street, Broadbrook. I doubt that I have to bring this to the attention of the Selectmen, but 99 Scannick Road. Two houses there with their Hatfield and McCoy battle going on, and this ridiculous Santa Claus pumpkin thing. It's irritating, however, it's gone downhill, now that there's an American flag involved. And I think it's gone beyond reasonable. So I just point that out, and some kind of communication from the Selectmen might help dissuade this. It's not good. I'm not happy with the American flag being part of this personal tirade back and forth. It's inappropriate. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else for public participation?
Thank you.
Okay. Again, I have no communications. We have no resignations. We do have some reappointments. And the terms are, the terms in the board are consistent, so we could do B1 and 2 together or separately. We could do B3 and 4 together or separately. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Alan.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Karen Christensen for the Pension and Retirement Resident Member for a term expiring June 1, 2026, and Edward Bowser, Pension and Retirement Resident Member for a term expiring June 1, 2026.
There a second?
Selectman Musco will second.
Any discussion?
I'll just say that they're, they both are attending meetings. They have good input, so I'm glad to have them coming back.
I'm actually surprised that at least one of them is coming back, but I'm glad to see that too.
Yeah, me too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. B3.
Make a motion to reappoint James Thursday Building Commission as a regular member for a term expiring June 1, 2028.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. B4.
I'll move to reappoint Richard Pippen Jr. to Building Commission as a regular member for a term expiring June 1, 2028.
There a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. New appointments. William A. Los for the Town of East Windsor Broadbrook Fire Commission Alternate Member for a term expiring June 30, 2025. Is there a motion?
Selectman Musco will move to appoint William A. Los to the Town of East Windsor Broadbrook Fire Commission as an alternate member for a term expiring June 30, 2025.
Okay.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay. Now we're on to 8A, South Road Ownership Option Update. So the next thing that was on our to-do list for this was to do an 824 referral, which is a statutory requirement. Anytime a municipality is going to acquire or disperse publicly held property, because the town currently holds the ground that the homes sit on, we needed to do an 824 referral. In your packet, there's actually correspondence back and forth between our new land use attorney and planning department staff, as well as a memo from Mike Demato that argues favorably that we've already satisfied the 824 referral when the question was submitted to Planning and Zoning for the subdivision. So the commission is aware of what the intention was, and they have already acquiesced to moving forward with it. So we don't need to do anything further on that. The next step, I believe the next step will be, and I don't have my notes here at home, but I believe the next step is going to be that we convene a meeting with the property owners, and then we do the deed reportings after that. So we are, you know, to say we're on the three-yard line is a pretty accurate depiction of where this process is. It's taken forever. It had to go through two legislative sessions. But at the end of the day, we're gonna be able to disperse our ownership of this property, sell it to the homeowners, and we'll do it in a way so that their interests are protected. So I just wanted to provide an update that we are as close to that as we have ever been. And we don't need to do anything technical, other than to now meet with the residents. My best recollection. Any questions or comments on that?
Okay, yes, I know. You were right. On the 27th, the Water Ocean Patrol Authority addressed sewer issues with the subdivisions over there. And I believe it left with, they were going to contact the attorney and determine on that information. But looks in the file would like to comment, because I missed that meeting. But it's my understanding that connectivity isn't going to be a problem on those units.
Well, no, we, oh, sorry. The only thing up is the easements, and it's the filing of the MYRs, and we can sign off on the easements. That's it.
Right. Paul had actually come in the day after the last WPCA meeting to file the deeds, or the easement on the deed, and we couldn't do it because we didn't have the final MYR from J.R. Russo yet. So I don't know if that's been received since I've been out, but that is one of the left foot, right foot things that won't require any further action. It's just, you know, administrative on Paul's part and my part. Okay. The next one. Discuss, discuss the resolution approving the lease purchase agreement and ESCO agreement for the Broadbrook Fire Department fire apparatus. So we went through all of the process that we need to go through in order to buy a new fire truck about a month ago. A little more than that, a month and a half ago. We did the Board of Selectmen process. We went through a town meeting. The paperwork was submitted to the leasing company ahead of the deadline. And for whatever reason, the leasing company said that we got the paperwork to them too close to the deadline, so they weren't gonna honor the deal. So that caused a little bit of a scramble, and thanks to John Madigan and to Jerry Bancroft and others to figure out a couple of options. We have a new lease term that is held until June 12. And there was, there were two companies that they got information from. And the long and short of it is leasing 2, the original company, is one of those, and the dollar amount has not changed from what went to and was approved by town meeting. So there is no need for us to go through the additional mechanizations of another public hearing, another Board of Selectmen meeting, and another town meeting. We, nothing has materially changed, so the authorization is still valid, even though some of the lease terms changed a bit. The dollar amount and the acquisition has not changed. So we're, that's, that was, this item was put there in case there was a need for us to go through all of that. But I asked Amy to do an assessment of the original deal that was, went to town meeting and the deal that, or the two pieces that the fire guys did put in front of us. And the long and short of it is, if, as long as we go with leasing 2, we don't have to go through that process again. If we go with the other company, then we would have to go back through that process all by June 12. So that's the, the long and short of that. It's, it was a placeholder agenda item. It serves as a good opportunity to give an update. But everything, once I'm able to get back and sign the documents, everything will be, all systems go again. Okay. That brings us to Agenda Item 8F. So we had, we, about 15 minutes ago, held the public hearing on the town's participation in the Neighborhood Assistance Act. I now would like a vote of affirmation to go ahead and submit that paperwork from the town, so that we'll have all of our documentation squared away. So could I have, unless there's, well, for discussions purposes, could I have a motion in a second on that?
I'll make that motion. If we go ahead and approve the Neighborhood Assistance Act. Vote for the Public Hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, we go, we come to a presentation from the Beta Group regarding the work that they've done putting together the Town Park's master plan. I, I can see the back of Joe's head, and I assume the back of Melissa's head. I'm Melissa. So, and I think I also see Randy, and is that Nate too?
And that's Nate too.
Okay. So
Showing offers.
Gentlemen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to you. If you need to share a screen, I'll let you do that.
We have a thumb drive to plug in to do the presentation.
Yeah, so if, if you, Joe can help you get that set up, I'm sure.
You're gonna share the screen here? Jay?
I can't share it from here. They, they have access to share it from, from
Does the meeting have access to share?
Yes.
So you can put the thumb drive in, right?
Could I just have identification of who's there, please?
I'm Joe Sauerhoff, extraordinary. Technical whiz.
That's all of the vowels, Peg. All of the vowels.
Here's, um, with the chairman of the Beta Group.
Randy Collins, Vice President, Beta Group.
It's Social, let's give our executive group.
Oh wait, you gotta go and zoom into share?
Yep.
Okay. Bottom, there you go. There you go. You can sit right there.
No, you gotta go to
Well, he's gotta find this folder.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Go search this search folders. Nobody goes on this computer. There you go. Explore folders. So there you go. There you go.
Nice.
Can you see it now?
Jay, can you see that?
Yeah, it looks great.
Okay.
Zoom out just a touch, Nate. Can you minimize the, the people on the right? So they don't have to look at each other? All right, it's all yours.
Hold on. Thank you, everyone, for having us here. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, my name is Nathan Socia, here with Randy Collins from Beta Group. And we're here to present the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for Town of East Windsor. Real quick on an agenda, project team introduction, project overview, presentation, and a quick listening and discussion, and then closing remarks and next steps. The project team consisted of, from the town, Melissa and Joe, and then Randy Collins and myself. Quick overview, we started this process back in October 2021, where we talked to Melissa and Joe, and then began an inventory analysis of all the parks in the study. At our first community meeting, we met with the town and community members, and basically just listened to everyone to get a pretty good understanding of how the parks were used. From there, we began developing preliminary designs for the designs are really about a roadmap for where we see the parks going forward for the next 20, 30 years. And then we shared these initial designs in February, this next community meeting, where we again received feedback from the community, as well as the town, and then revised the designs based off that feedback, and here we are today in front of you. You know, real quick on our, how we view park design, we see it as a combination of town schools, safety regulatory guidelines, as well as community input, getting feedback from all those different aspects to come with the consensus on the design. And in the parks that we had within the study, it included East Windsor Park, Prospect Park, Volunteer and Osborne Park, Town Hall Annex, the Abbey Road Soccer Complex, Broadbrook Pond Park, and Chris Memorial Park. And, you know, as we're learning about this, we saw that the parks were spread throughout the whole community, with the cluster being near the Town Hall Annex, and the rest kind of around the whole area. And we kind of followed the goals that were provided to us by the town, which was really developing a mission, which really included reviewing the conditions that are now, as we mentioned previously, listening to the community, and then developing goals, and from there, the master plans. And so we have each apartment to try to get this see each one, as the, showing the existing conditions as they were back in 2021, and then the proposal for each one, and kind of quickly run through the goals of each park. Starting off with East Windsor Park, and I might go back and forth a couple of times here. Can everyone see my mouse cursor when I move through here?
Yep.
We see the primary goal, starting from the entry of the park and redeveloping the access point, cleaning up that circulation route, and then going into the different parking lots, making sure we have ADA access to each parking lot, cleaning those lots up a little bit as well. Coming into the core of the park, there's a few different elements here, and what we really want to develop was that turn it more into a campus, central core, with a network of paths tying together the recent bands that show with the concession stands, and then a little bit down here, developing the lawn games, including the horseshoes and bocce and things like that. And then immediately across the area, making sure we provide some safe access across the parking lot, developing a rental facility for birthday parties right adjacent to the existing splash pad. And then coming further down the parking lot, providing a turnaround point of this area, the roundabout, with a loading area for larger events at the band shell. Going even further down to the last parking lot, developing this area in the soccer areas there, and the way that the fields are laid out right now, I'm taking a chance since this project started turning that 90 degrees to get the north-south orientation to maximize, to really limit the amount of the sun effect playing out there, and then expanding it a little bit, which we'd want to do by grating it out a little bit further along the edges, and then adding an irrigation system in there for long-term durability of the lawn areas. And then back here, number 13, this is a stockpile area, it's our understanding, so screening that a little bit. And then along the whole perimeter, we'd like to see a trail or path system circumnavigating the park. And then within that trail system, having adult fitness areas, kind of like a circuit incrementally along that area, so that when you come visit, whether you're walking or running or jogging, having little activities along the way. And then, really, we want all these improvements coordinated over the next 20, 25 years, with the dredging of the swimming area to keep that at its best maintenance. And then we're, like proponents of reducing maintenance where possible, so we're actually recommending some of the lawn areas currently along the peripheral edge to be converted into a low-mow maintenance area, where instead of mowing every week, you might go down to mowing every other week or three times a year, to allow it to turn to meadow grass, and allow some of that edges to naturalize. And this would work in combination with providing some screening along these edges to help separate the different uses between the best natural and the park itself. And then one of the big differences here is that there's currently a baseball field in this location with backstop and dunnets and all that stuff. And our understanding is that it has been not utilized that much anymore. And so we see it internally being turned into a multi-use field area, where the final use for the space could be developed later on. And lastly, adding a playground on the opposite side of Resporab, across from the skate area, so that the town could have the playground for whether or not they had access into the park. Moving on to Osborne and Volunteer Park.
Can we ask questions if we can go on, or do I want to do?
Oh. Do I wait to the end? Oh, and I'll go quicker, smaller parks. So, again, very much like East Windsor Park, adding a circulation system connecting the different parking lots, the field, the concession stand, and then playground, improving those parking areas by adding sidewalks where necessary, and then providing some crosswalks, better integrating Osborne and Volunteer Park, and expanding that loop area, enhancing the pavilions, bringing up the code where there's been, as they've had to grade a little bit over the years, to make sure that all railings and boards are in place. Developing a universal accessible playground, and this kind of comment is across all the parks, is, you know, over the next 20, 25 years, begin a cycle of allowing the playgrounds, which have been around for quite a while, to come down, and then new equipment, which has changed over the past 20, 25 years, more modern equipment be developed to make sure that it's universally accessible. In addition, some minor grading by basketball court, and then incorporating pickleball courts on the other side of the basketball court, and adjusting these former baseball fields into multi-use fields, which could be used for soccer and things like that. And then allowing a little bit of more vegetation to regrow along the peripheral area, that was a wet spot back here, allowing that moving on to the Abbey, Abbey Road Soccer Complex, if I say that correctly. So we're really excited about this area. I think there's a lot of potential there. And as it stands right now, there are two fields, and so one of the biggest changes to this would be taking the southernmost field, expanding it from one soccer field into two soccer fields, and then, which would include a lot of clearing, grading, being mindful of the boundaries and things like that to fit it in, and providing a high-quality athletic field lighting system at the lower field here, as the primary, and perhaps I could expand later on, and providing a loop walk around the entire perimeter of the area to provide that walking trail, and then tying this into some different nature trails and adjacent town properties where possible. And that's pretty much it. Moving on to Pierce Memorial Park. Starting from the beginning of the parking area, developing ADA parking spot, finding a gateway going into the park with a path to a new universal typical play area with some seating and benching and picnic tables along the back, incorporating pickleball, striping into basketball court to develop the basketball court with a multi-use area, enhancing or updating the flagpole as well as removing the old backstop to the baseball field and then developing the field to multi-use fields. The Prospect Park, similar treatment. This one has a fairly limited parking at the entrance and so one of the first priority goals, we believe, is expanding that parking area into the park so that the fields could have more use, more users and then adding a circulation system to the park connecting the parking areas, the playground and then to the basketball court, which we'd also recommend developing into multi-use courts by incorporating pickleball, striping in combination with basketball areas. Expanding the connection where possible to get access on Prospect Hill, enhancing signage where feasible to provide more visibility to this park. Continue to enhance these fields back here and develop them into multi-use field. And there's a wet area down here and allowing that to go back to natural vegetation. The Town Hall Annex, we see the prior priorities being providing a sidewalk along Dean Avenue and School Street as well as providing a connection from Main Street to Dean Avenue so that one could traverse around the entire area. Just that, expanding the playground, incorporating universal access playground that's fair as well as adding to it and providing a walk system from the parking lot to the playground as well as potential access for a seasonal ice skating rink back here. And then when the brings down the use of course, developing the field into a multi-use field and then allowing this lawn area to revert back into a low-mow type area. Existing swing set. And finally, Broadbrook Pond Park. You see the priorities being providing ADA access to parking lot, providing a path system here with a universal accessible fishing dock. Again, here with some benches right along the sidewalk and then providing accessory and access to our new sidewalk where you walk here. And enhancing the pavilion as well as, you know, trying to accommodate boat usage better and we know this wants to be done in conjunction with the dredging of this pond. But some enhancements could be adding a launching or loading dock on this side as well as we've seen some communities have a crew storage that's community-run, you could lock canoe or kayak up, so you don't have to be toting it back and forth from your home every single time. And that's an empty church fees for these things too, so it's a good money-making opportunity. And it was our recommended enhancements in summary and quick to open up for conversation.
Well, I'll call too soon because my question went ahead. We addressed it on the next slide. When you had commented on putting a park across the street from the reservoir so that when it's closed, they have to take, stood out here. I thought you were going to replace one with this part, but it's there.
So I would just say, I think you guys did a fantastic job of giving us a roadmap looking ahead. Is there going to be like a hard copy of a final report? Did you price out the improvements that you've identified so that we have something we can, you know, when the call comes, what do we have that's a shovel-ready project? We can just grab something off the shelf?
Yeah, absolutely. We are still crunching some numbers and we're hoping to provide some prices for a few select areas. I mean, we, with pricing the way it's been so recently and being all over the place, we don't think it will be too helpful having pricing for everything because by the time we get to it, it's going to be completely different anyways. We're targeting those first priority projects and giving you a good, accurate price estimate. We're going to get that to you in a few days.
Okay, great.
No, is it okay to ask what the targeting areas? The areas we're looking right now for price estimating include these fields back here. So which would include a few different elements, including re-irrigation system, lawn areas and various elements to enhance this area back here. And the other focus area was going to be on Abbey Road and looking at the enhancements of these two fields here, which we include pre-construction clearing needed to have this be addressed. How would you expand these fields over like that with the various elements included in that? And finally, providing lighting for the lower field, which is probably too small to see, but it's called, I think it's Field Three.
Both of those dovetail right into the bond funds that the towns received from the state just a couple of weeks ago. Pertaining to Abbey Road in particular and the locating of a third field, did you, did you look at or would we need to consider wetlands implications?
We did a preliminary review of the wetlands and, you know, it is a concern. We're trying to limit the expanse into it as the greatest tree possible and but as it gets, you know, further developed, I think we'd have to be, you know, some has to go out there and actually flag some wetlands and things like that to make sure the viability of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would say, I mean, anybody that's been down there to that field, you can see the, the amount of wetness is that, if you look at the, the existing conditions there all along that existing field, it's pretty wet right in that tree line there. So definitely have to make sure we know what we're doing when we try to put a field there, otherwise it might not be usable.
Absolutely.
Other questions or comments from, for the folks from Beta?
I see you're talking about the pricing to basically do some soccer fields in the two parks. What about improvements? Are you doing any pricing for improvements to Osborne? Specifically, you know, you showed, if you could go back to that, the new version of Osborne, yeah. So like, you know, where the, the ball field is, that's east, you know, of the parking lot. You know, the outfield there, that gets real wet, you know, and I see how you have, you know, section B is, is, you know, going to be low-mo. That, like, the whole backside gets really wet or if you're going to do work in this, you know, to improve those or create those two multi-use soccer fields and that, and that softball field, do you envision like needing to bring in fill? I mean, have you gone that far to figure out like how you keep these areas from being wet? Because they do tend to be pretty wet. Especially if you do spring soccer and baseball, you're
We, you know, during the analysis process, I've done a preliminary review of different conditions, including soils and wetlands and things like that. But basically off of the town's GIS and so we were aware of the issue. You know, I think it says you dig into it, there's a few different approaches to handle it, including like you're saying, fill, surface drainage and then additionally under drainage. And then looking at the soil and seeing if you can modify some of the textures to allow it to be more porous to help with infiltration as well. But I mean, that would be really developed later on as you get into these projects and start looking at some.
Other questions or comments?
Seems like overall, these are just conceptual. There's not really a lot that's actionable, except for we could take this to somebody and say, give us a price on this and how much would it take, right?
Yeah, I mean, like we said earlier, this is really a roadmap. You know, prioritizing the different goals and then you know, getting feedback on what everyone agrees is really the priorities. And then from there, we would, once projects are established, we'd be more than happy to really develop into those projects and, you know, I think, you know, not every, there's no plan is correct, but some are useful is the phrase. And we think this is going to be a useful plan for targeting things and we think everything in here is feasible. But, you know, things do change.
So I would just say like, this is a really interesting time to be in government because it seems like money is falling from everywhere for projects like this and oftentimes we have to scramble to figure out like, okay, somebody needs an answer in an hour with, for what we can do with, with state or federal money that may appear. Now we'll have something where we can actually use this as a reference point and draw from that when opportunities present themselves in the future. I think this is, it, one of the things that's most appealing to me about this is that we don't have to do it all and we don't have to do it all in order. So the improvements that we can make when the opportunity is there, we now have a studied plan that we can point to and say, let's, let's see if we can accomplish item number four. You know, and then once item number four is accomplished, we move on to item number seven. So I think this is a valuable thing to have, like, like you said, there's some value to this.
Yes, and we, we hope this acts as a living document where as pieces are done, they're removed from the list and then new items are added and it's adjusted as things change.
But Jason, Joe here, the important thing is here is that this is what the community, the people who gave us input from the community. This isn't a staff decision or anything like that. This is what the community said. This is what we want where.
Yep, I agree. Other comments? Guys, thank you very much. We'll look forward to reading the final proof.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Agenda item nine B is a request from Director of Recreation and Community Services, Melissa Maltefi, for an alcohol waiver for the Summer Concert Series. We all did this last year. I think we all would recognize to, to great fanfare, the program last year was a great success and I know Melissa's been working hard to build on it this year. One of the things I would say about the alcohol waiver that we granted last year is, I think I was at all six of the concerts and I don't recall a single instance where anybody abused it. And I think that was, I think that's a real testament to, you know, the fact that we can do something like this safely, responsibly and have a good time enjoying each other's company. So would anyone like to make a motion to approve the application?
Make a motion to approve the application for the exception of the alcoholic government trip at East Windsor Park on the June sixteen, twenty-third, thirty, July seventh, fourteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight, August second, eleventh, eighteenth and twenty-fifth. And any other dates related to the Summer Concert Series.
Lechman Muska will second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Jason, I just, I just want to echo what you said as far as no one abusing it. Everyone was extremely respectful, cleaned up after themselves and people really looked forward. So I'm really glad that we have it going in town and I'm glad that we can do this.
Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously.
See how I corrected that?
I did bring posters of the concert series, so you guys can hang them out to different, your product presence, so I'll give you a couple and you can give them out wherever. And there'll be one for you for the minute.
I was just going to ask for one.
Got you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're on to tax refunds.
Lechman Muska will move to approve the tax refunds totaling three thousand, one hundred, sixty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. So Lechman's report. All right, first I want to apologize for participating, participating in tonight's meeting remotely. As pretty much everybody has heard at this point, my family and I are homesick with COVID, which is why my report is also going to be a little bit shorter than usual. Last Tuesday, voters in town approved the town budget on the first referendum. Not only will this allow the town to move forward into the next fiscal year with a thoughtful and reasonable approach to town and school administration, but it saves taxpayers the seven thousand dollar expense of having to conduct multiple referenda. When the Board of Finance finalized the budget proposal ahead of the referendum, the mill rate was expected to go up by a very modest point zero seven mils. That was before the state of Connecticut adopted their amended budget, which actually included more municipal aid to the town of East Windsor. Because of that, the budget that was adopted last week will actually result in a mill rate decrease of point one-two mils or nearly two tenths of a mil less than was expected. The current mill rate is thirty-four point five and the newly adopted mill rate will be thirty-four point three eight. This will result in most homes in East Windsor seeing a tax cut this year. Motor vehicles will also see the mill rate capped on their vehicles at an amount not to exceed thirty-two point four-six mils. Thank you to all those who voted last week. I am excited to share that the, that House Bill five-one-six-six passed both chambers of the legislature in concurrence prior to the conclusion of the legislative session. Thank you to our legislators, Senator Anwar, Representatives Foster and Hall for their advocacy securing passage of what had pejoratively become known as the Bowser Bill, a bill that will help towns with our form of government be more competitive in utilizing tax agreements for economic development. A lot of time has been spent in recent weeks trying to find a resolution for residents of the School Hill Association as they seek solutions to a contaminated community well. I've met with representatives of Connecticut Water Company at their office in Middletown on May tenth and we met again with them, our legislators, the association and the Department of Public Health yesterday. Through some really collaborative efforts, we're able to share several different options for the association to consider so that they have safe potable drinking water. That's all I have this week respectfully submitted and I would turn to Marie De Souza.
I attended the housing authority meeting last night, May eighteenth. Three noteworthy things that Barbara McGrath from UConn School of Law met with them and discussed the advantage of applying for a five oh one seat free status for Hart Hill. That was a very lengthy conversation and educational for the board. So she's going to go forward. In doing that, they put together a committee to oversee the five oh one seat free if and when it gets approved. And as of last night, there's four people that have been signed to from the commission of Katie Winfield and Mark Simmons from the board and then a resident from the tenant association will be appointed in as community, myself as the fourth individual to be on that board. And then as it develops and there's a need, they'll take a note, look at those that are planted and add a couple more people to that board and then whoever is no longer available. So that's going to be excellent moving forward for there. Also Penny Fisher from the Connecticut Housing Financial Authority, the assistant manager, met with Lou De Collins, the director at Park Hill to review their policies and for the facilities where they haven't been out for a couple of years through COVID and things seem to be fine according to them. And they also recognized May as National Older Americans Month with the theme of twenty-twenty-two being aged my way. So to honor those up at Park Hill that meet that criteria, they're going to have a luncheon tomorrow for them.
Yeah, I was looking forward to going to that. Obviously not now. Charlie?
Okay, I only had two meetings since our last one. The first was last Thursday, East Windsor PTO held their final meeting of the year. They reported a very healthy year financially despite with COVID fundraising being difficult, but thanks to the town and the COVID relief fund. And the PTO taking advantage of that, they were able to raise a good amount of money to continue to do things for the schools. They do a lot of things in support of the schools, helping for field trips. One book, one school event, appreciation days of all sorts, different types. And one of the last things they're doing this year is they're having a color fun run this Saturday morning at ten AM at the East Windsor Middle School track. And it was a pre-signup event, but they are leaving it open to people that want to show up the day of the event. It just asks that you wear a white T-shirt and they will supply you with sunglasses and it's a five dollar per person entry to do that. And basically what they'll be doing is just having people run around the middle school. They have kind of like a, I think it's about a three-quarter mile track set up there, gravel track, and they'll be having other people throw colors on when you run by. So it sounds like a great time. I have to work. So unfortunately I won't be there, but they'll be having that. And then last night I attended the Board of Finance meeting, which there wasn't a lot happening at the town financials. As far as tax collections are very high and in good shape for this year. The board's not forecasting any huge shortcomings or bound monies. Although they were saying there was a little bit, looks like coming back to us from the, from healthcare, some savings there. And the Board of Education reported that they're heavily concentrating on estimating their salary budget for the rest of this year to make sure that they can pay out their teachers for the remainder of this school year because they're down to the wire on the last of their school funds for the year. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Alan?
Okay, so due to a light meeting cycle the last two weeks and the fact that I've been out of state quite a bit, you'll be happy to hear that I am sparing you my report this weekend.
Sarah?
That's okay. I'll make up for it because mine is rather lengthy. The Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on May ninth was not held due to lack of a forum. On May tenth and May sixteenth, the Arts and Culture Commission met. The commission is excited to promote and support local artists and craftsmen by selecting up to five artists a week to showcase and sell their products during the East Windsor Parks and Recreation Summer Concert Series. East Windsor artists will be given preference and the cost will be $10 per space payable to the Arts and Culture Commission. If you wish to be added to the artist bank or have any questions, please email ewartsandculture@gmail.com. Also, the Connecticut Trolley Museum has teamed up with Rise Up for Arts and our Arts and Culture Commission to produce an interactive mural at the Trolley Museum painted by local artist Heather Herendine from Lights and Dark. The mural will be focusing on the trolley era. And there is a GoFundMe page that is set up to help produce the funds needed to complete the mural. And I've included that link here. On May eleventh, I attended the Board of Education meeting. The board received a presentation from Mr. Masters, Dr. Hellerich, and AP class students to discuss the $20,000 Voice for Change Grant received from the state of Connecticut. This was a collaboration of three of Mr. Masters' government classes and five of Dr. Hellerich's classes. They each put forth an idea which was voted on by the student body and Dr. Hellerich's group on a study lounge was the winner. The study lounge will help with mental health, hopes to improve grades and will be a safe and comfortable place for students to study. The initiatives from the Portrait of the Graduate used were informed lifelong learners and responsible citizens. Underclassmen were involved in this project, so it's really great that they'll get to see the project through completion over the next school year. A financial report was given by Ryan Galloway. Mr. Galloway set a goal of the end of July for establishing a new structure for the chart of accounts for the next fiscal year. He will also be meeting with South Windsor for guidance on how their Board of Education accounts were set up. And he will be going through an investment assessment with Munis to see what went wrong previously. Daryl Rulliar discussed PSAT and SAT scores for students graduating between 2022 and 2025. And unfortunately, our district's scores are not where they need to be and we ranked in the bottom third of Alliance districts. Scores like this are being seen like this around the state in our reflection of the COVID pandemic and students not being in school for one and a half years. The district is working diligently to offer support to students and bring scores up. But on a positive note, two East Windsor High School students participated and graduated from a CNA program. And three students participated and graduated from a program at Dymo Tech. These programs were being offered by the veteran, excuse me, by the Vernon Adult Regional Based Education Program. And East Windsor was very fortunate to participate. And then on May twelfth, I attended the Veterans Commission meeting. The commission put the finishing touches on their Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony program. Share the East Windsor High School band will be participating and we will have a student singing the National Anthem. On May second, Bob Lake was reappointed as the town's municipal service officer. He is excited to continue serving in this capacity for the town of East Windsor. And the commission reviewed applications submitted for their scholarship program. They give two East Windsor High School seniors $750 each and they did make their selections. And the group also finalized the eligibility and criteria for the East Windsor Veterans Temporary Assistance Grant Program that will now be offered in conjunction with East Windsor Social Services. And I think that's more than enough.
It will now go to our second public participation. Marie, I'll turn it back over to you. If there's anybody in the room who would like to speak.
The Los Forty Four Hours Road, Broadbrook Pond Recreation Area down there. I think that should be expanded. Twenty foot round for digging up pond and make it deeper. At the same time, I think there should be a path along the east side of the pond for walking. So I think the park direction will get to that. And at the same time, I know we have some way, I think, available for dredging out the pond. A lot of people use that. I see people there every day fishing and walking down through there. So the new path along the pond there, that excellent job.
Thank you, Bill.
Anybody else in the room? That looks like it, yeah.
Okay, we will not have an executive session tonight. So the only thing we need to do is to adjourn. Is there a motion?
I'll move to adjourn our regular meeting at seven fifty-eight.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. It's non-debatable. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at seven fifty-eight PM.